We welcome you to the Twilla City Council Business Meeting. It's Wednesday, May 21, 2025. It's 7:00 PM. This meeting is being held at Twilla City Hall in the council chambers located at 90 North Main Street in Twilla, Utah. We are also streaming this electronically on the Twilla City YouTube channel. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will, please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our second item is a roll call. Councilwoman Manzio.
Present.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Present.
Councilman Hanson.
Present.
Councilman McCall.
Present.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I'm also present. We'll move on to item three, which is a Boys and Girls Club, Utah State Youth of the Year. This is presented by Taylor Goring.
Hello, everyone. My name is Taylor Goring. I'm a Boys and Girls Club member here at our Twilla Boys and Girls Club. Our Twilla Club has 150 members signed up to attend our summer camp this year, as well as 300 members so far for the entire year. Recently, through multiple levels of competition, I've earned the title of Utah State Youth of the Year. Youth of the Year is a leadership position for teens across the nation to advocate for our peers. In June, I will once again compete, this time for the Pacific Region Youth of the Year title. I will be judged on my overall GPA, community involvement, and a speech that will be presented to a panel of judges. Tonight, I would like to share this speech with you as a way to practice, as well as to give you a taste of how amazing my club has been to youth like me. As an artist, blank canvases can be terrifying, endless possibilities and endless opportunities to make mistakes. Countless times, I've sat frozen in front of that empty space, overwhelmed by the pressure to turn it into something meaningful. My name is Taylor Goring, a Twilla Boys and Girls Club member of 11 years. When I first walked through the big blue doors of my club, Ms. Starr was there to greet me and help me find my way to the art program, which immediately sparked my interest and began my love of all things creative. The paints that the club provided me were bright and warm, but outside of those walls, the canvas of my life was not so vibrant. At the age of four, my family and I were forced to flee from my household, leaving behind not just my childhood home, but my drunk father, the bullet holes through the walls, and my childhood itself. I was forced to grow up fast, putting all I had into making sure everything was perfect, somehow managing to ignore the black streak of paint, slowly spreading its way across my masterpiece, turning the bright colors muddy and dull. Four years ago, it finally took over. Between the struggles of COVID-19, my mom starting to date, and my father suddenly appearing in my life again, everything was thrown off course. I suffered from mental illness, constantly fighting my depression and anxiety. After reaching my breaking point, I was forced to reach out and seek help. I ran back to my Boys and Girls Club, which I soon realized had always been an available source of stability. There, a new canvas awaited me, not in a literal sense, but meaning the blank slate of my life, free of all mistakes, blunders, and trauma. Most importantly, at my Boys and Girls Club, I had caring staff and peers to help me plan for and create the most wonderful painting I could want. Thanks to some form of luck or miracle, the Boys and Girls Club led me to just the right place to learn about my future career. I joined a class in street law and was accepted into an internship at Foley &amp; Lardner. I know I have my club support as I attend law school, eventually becoming a full-time attorney. My dream is to make sure that the youth around me can learn the same truth I have, that the challenges we face can help us become stronger than ever before. I now know that through my club, I'm not alone. I know that through the endless support my Boys and Girls Club has provided me, I will proceed with confidence in painting the canvas of my life. Thank you.
That was awesome.
It was really awesome.
We're excited for you to compete and wish you the best, and I think you'll do great. That was amazing, so great job.
Chairman, I just want to let you know that I met Taylor a few months ago when she came to my office, and I will tell you what Boys and Girls Club has done for this community is just phenomenal, and I appreciate Mayor Charlie Roberts, who saw what needed to be here in Twilla. And I just, I want to publicly thank Darlene Dixon, who is here tonight. Darlene has been with the Boys and Girls Club for 40 years. She has just announced her retirement, but I want you to know Darlene and her team have literally changed the lives of thousands of children. They have, and these children have grown up to be Taylors, and that's what makes the world a good place. So I'm appreciative of Dar and her team, and Taylor, we are so proud of you, and we're going to be watching. We are going to be watching you so that we can help other kids to see what they can become and overcome their hardships, so we're very proud of you. Thank you.
We'll move on to our next item, which is our public comment period. This is the time for the public to address the council. We ask that you state your name into the microphone, keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then sign the paper by Michelle and Loretta. The time is now the publics. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public comment period, and we'll move on to item five, a public hearing and motion on ordinance 2025-13 in ordinance of Twilla City amending Twilla City Code Section 7-19-35 regarding minor subdivisions. This is presented by Andrew Agard, the Community Development Director.
Thank you, council. We discussed this proposed ordinance amendment at your previous work session meeting, so I'll forego a lot of the details and just go over the basic changes. This is a code amendment that is initiated by staff in regards to minor residential subdivisions. We actually don't have anything in our code that authorizes minor subdivisions in commercial or industrial zoning districts. So in order to facilitate a little more convenient subdivision process for owners of commercial properties and industrial properties, we are proposing the minor changes to the ordinance as shown on the slide. We're proposing to basically strike the word residential from the minor subdivision ordinance, and that would enable minor subdivisions to occur on any lot within the city that meets those three criteria. And it will reduce the cost of subdivision for those that are developing land and also reduce the time for subdivision approval process. This application did go to the Planning Commission on May 14, and the commission did vote six to zero in favor of this application. This is a text amendment. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Any questions or comments? Thanks, Andrew. This has a public hearing, so we will invite the public to address the council. State your name into the mic, keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then sign the paper by Michelle. The time is now the publics. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-13, an ordinance of Twilla City amending Twilla City Code Section 7-19-35 regarding minor subdivisions.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilwoman Goachis. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item six is a public hearing and motion on ordinance 2025-14, an ordinance of Twilla City amending Twilla City Code Title VII regarding parking for townhomes and affordable single-family housing as required by Utah Legislature, House Bill 181, presented by Andrew Agard.
Thank you, council. So likewise, the details of this ordinance amendment were presented at your previous work session meeting, and it is in response to some mandatory changes by the state legislature. It affects four of our ordinances. It affects Title VII, Chapter 4, off-street parking requirements; Title VII, Chapter 11A, design standards for multifamily residential; Title VII, Chapter 11B, design standards for single-family residential; and Title VII, Chapter 14, residential zoning districts. The state is basically telling us what we can and cannot count for parking in regards to required parking for single-family and multifamily residential. The first proposed change is to ordinance 7-4-4, number of parking spaces. We are proposing to increase the number of visitor parking per dwelling unit from one space for every four dwelling units to one space for every three dwelling units. We are proposing changes to 7-11A, 13-1, townhouse parking. This change would limit the depth of a garage from 22 feet to 20 feet in response to state code, state requirements. Also in that same ordinance, we are amending the table of required parking for townhomes. This is per state requirement. If you have two garage spaces, those count for two spaces. So currently, our code does not do that, but these amendments would count any garage space to satisfy the required parking. We're proposing amendments to 7-11B-5. There is an exception to the garage requirement. If a home meets the state definition of affordable housing, which is 80% of the Twilla County median home price, they can claim an exception to the garage requirement. In Table 7-14, we're adding a footnote, footnote number four, which would direct you down to this note, which also grants an exception to the garage requirement if you meet the 80% affordable housing standard as defined by the state. This also went to the Planning Commission on May 14. They did recommend in favor, six to nothing, and it is here for your decision. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Where are we at with that 80% requirement for? Go back to that previous slide. 80% of the Twilla County median home price.
This one? Well, I'm not entirely sure. At the Planning Commission meeting, I believe, or maybe it was the previous city council meeting, Chris Sloan, our planning commissioner, said the median home price is about $470,000. So somebody would have to come in at 80% of that to qualify for the exception, and they would have to demonstrate to staff that they meet that. Does that answer your question?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So they don't have to have a garage? Do they have to have like a carport, or is it just no garage? It just says?
No garage requirement at all.
Okay.
I'm actually surprised that they shortened the garage from 22 to 20 feet. You know, we drive trucks in Utah.
I think their intention is that moving forward, you don't need a garage. You use it as storage, because a big truck like Ed's won't fit in a 20-foot garage. You know what I mean? So you got a 3,500, you're not parking it in a garage.
They're tight in a 22-foot garage.
Tell me about that. So I think that's what they're doing. Hey, use it for storage. Oh, unless you can count it as a parking spot. Yeah.
Right.
That's the only way I can figure it, man, because it don't make no sense to me.
But it's only garages for townhomes and condominiums, not single-family homes.
Yeah, the restriction would apply to the townhomes and condominiums.
All right.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thanks, Andrew. This requires a public hearing as well, so we invite the public to address the council. State your name into the mic, keep your comments to three minutes or less, and sign the paper by Michelle. The time is now the publics. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion we approve ordinance 2025-14, an ordinance of Twilla City amending Twilla City Code Title VII regarding parking for townhomes and affordable single-family housing as required by the Utah Legislature, House Bill 181.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman Hanson and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item seven is a public hearing and motion on ordinance 2025-15, an ordinance of the Twilla City Council amending the Twilla City General Plan Land Use Map for 11.7 acres of property located near 249 East, 1,000 North from medium-density residential land use designation to the light industrial land use designation, presented by Andrew Agard.
Thank you, Chairman. This land use map amendment involves the 11.7 acre highlighted in red on your aerial photograph. It is the inverted L-shaped parcel sandwiched between the new fire station and the our house assisted living facility. The property around the subject property is largely undeveloped ground. The current land use designation for the subject property is medium-density residential, and you'll note that medium-density residential is substantial on the east and north, with some regional commercial to the west, and then some high-density residential located to the south. The high-density, or excuse me, the medium-density residential land use designation is a designation that requires single-family, two-family residential uses, as well as accessory dwelling units, and does not permit any commercial other than what you would find in a home occupation. This is a zoning map just for the council's reference. The zoning of the property is currently RR5 with a sliver of LI on the west corner, and we have some general commercial located where the our house assisted living facility is located, and then the properties to the west are all zoned light industrial. The applicant is requesting to change the land use designation to light industrial in order to facilitate discussion on a zoning map amendment. All zoning map amendments have to comply with the city's land use map, so the first one to do is the land use. The light industrial designation permits uses that are heavier commercial and lighter industrial. It does not permit any residential uses other than caretaker units. Now, one of the things that came up during Planning Commission was a discussion of the uses permissible in the light industrial zone versus the industrial or commercial zones. So I've thrown together this, I've thrown this list. This is a list from the ordinance that shows the uses that are permissible. It may be hard to read, I apologize for that, but the light industrial column is highlighted in purple, and anything that has a P on it would be permitted, and anything that has a C would be conditional, and then if it's not showing with a P or a C, it's not permitted in that zone. The difficulty with these zones is many uses that are permissible in the light industrial zone are also permissible in the industrial service and in the industrial zone, and there are a lot of commercial activities that can occur in this zone. There really are few industrial uses that can occur in the light industrial, and I'll go over those a little bit later. But some of the uses you can see in this zone are automobile service and repair, agriculture and amusement facility. Moving on to the next list, you can see a conference center, car wash, business office. You could also see convenience store, convenience store with gasoline sales, a distribution center. You could even have a daycare or a preschool. Now, note the daycare and preschool is not permissible in the LI, so there are some uses that are not permissible in the industrial zone, but there are some uses you can do in the light industrial that you cannot do in the heavy industrial. So it kind of divides those out just a little bit. Moving down the list, you can see a fast food restaurant, funeral home, garden center, hardware and garden supply store, healthcare provider, healthcare facility, health club, heavy equipment sales and rental, and a heliport. And then continuing down, you could have a hotel, a kennel, which requires a conditional use permit, laundromat, light manufacturing and assembly, medical cannabis pharmacy, open space areas, trails, parks, park and ride facilities, personal services. Those are basically cosmetology, salons, and so forth. Moving down the list, recreational facilities, professional office. A lot of the uses you'll see in the light industrial are the same uses you're going to get in the general commercial and the regional commercial zones. And then a little bit further down here, personal storage facility can occur in this zone, reception centers, recreational facilities, indoor and outdoor, research facilities, retail sales, and so forth. What you will not see in the light industrial zone are some of the real nasty uses. We call these LULU's, locally unwanted land uses. They have a home in the industrial zone, and some of those are chemical manufacturing storage, food and beverage processing, junkyard, salvage yard, military surplus, recycling center, rock, sand, and gravel facilities, sexually oriented businesses, and vehicle storage yard. These really are the only uses that can occur in the industrial, but not in the light industrial. So the biggest difference between the two zones is the light industrial prohibits those types of industrial uses that create significant impacts to the adjacent property. The light industrial zone is designed to be closer, closer in proximity to residential areas to provide a buffer, but still to provide a little heavier scale commercial activity, such as warehousing and storage facilities, things of that nature. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 14 and voted six to nothing to recommend against the proposed light industrial designation. If you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to address that further for you. But that is what's being proposed. The applicant is here, and he does have a brief presentation that he could like to give, and so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Any questions for Andrew?
A couple.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Andrew. That was really helpful, because those were exactly the questions that I had, particularly how those businesses would be impacted by a noise ordinance, since it's next to a residential care facility. I'm just wondering if there is a noise ordinance that said that noise can't begin at a certain time and it has to end at a certain time, because I know that when trucks back in, they beep, 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 and, you know, you could have some significant impact to their residents next with noise.
Okay. Excellent question. Twilla City adheres to the county noise restrictions, which I believe are 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and there's a certain decibel level that they cannot exceed. So any time between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, if there are noise restrictions, those are enforceable. Between those hours, there are no noise restrictions, both in the county ordinance and the city's code.
Okay.
Excellent question.
Okay, any other questions right now for Andrew? Okay, thanks, Andrew.
Thank you for the time. Boyd Brown, Sandy, Utah. And thank you, Andrew. I thought that was a really good presentation on the uses, and I don't want to kind of duplicate, but I think, Andrew, when he pointed out the uses, really, that was a part we got excited about. We feel like this is a good buffer between the regional commercial and some of the uses, the care facility, and even as it buffers into residential in the future, and it is a lighter use than you would see in the general commercial. So we've covered the location of it. This is, again, I know this is land use. We wanted to just give an example of the scale of what we're looking at doing. It's a, this is a smaller-scale industrial business park, and we intend to design this in a way that it would provide units, some for sale and some for rent, for businesses, small businesses. We feel like as a growing community, some of the uses Andrew mentioned are the kind of businesses that want to be here, and some of those want to own their own units, but they're not big enough to be in the industrial depot or something like that. So our vision for this is these buildings may be ranging from 10,000 to 20,000 square feet, and that they would be divisible between 3,000 and 5,000-foot units, all the way up to like a user as large as an individual user, possibly as much as 20,000 square feet. But we think that the majority of these users will be in that 5,000 to 10,000-square-foot use, and that we, it's just a, like the uses in your table, there's just a wide variety of users that we think would, that there is a huge demand. This is just a picture. This isn't a real modern, but this is a product that's been built in Salt Lake County. I mean, I'm familiar with about 15 of these locations that were built over 20 years, and they're just, they have maintained businesses. There's been no vacancies, and they are just, these are roofing contractors, they're dance studios, they're engineering firms. This picture is, I believe, a window supply. This one is on Sandy Parkway, just off of the 90th South exit in Sandy. It was a three-acre project, and it was developed probably 15 or 20 years ago, and I go down there a lot, and there's a lot of different businesses that I've used over the years, and the fact that it's really maintained, there's not been any blight, and it's, these units come up for sale or leased, they're leased almost immediately. So it really, it's been a product type that's been sustainable throughout, like I said, these have been built. I have tracked these in different areas of Salt Lake and some in Utah County for over 20 years. This is an example. A lot of these businesses do have to warehouse some product, and they would have overhead doors in the back likely. Typically, they can be designed to have office and/or showroom up front, and then you have an opportunity to have product or equipment, or if you have a fleet of vans in the back. Did you have a question, or? These, again, we have not gone to the extent of having an architectural design on our specific products, but this is just another example. This building is in Utah County, and that one is divisible into 5,000-square-foot units. It's a little different look. That's modern. That one was built in Pace in Utah. The building itself is 40,000 square feet, and I believe it was divided into 12 different units. The smallest one was 2,500 square feet, and there was one that was as large as 10,000 square feet. It is the same building, just to show a little, maybe more modern architectural style or different building style. And just to give you an idea, this is, this one was more warehouse inside. They didn't build out any office. The user on this one, I think, was doing some light manufacturing inside of this space, but this was a 10,000-square-foot space. I think it was the largest one in that whole building. This one, again, I just, this is small business America, and this is a good example. This is one that was built on Bangator, just off of Bangator and Bluffdale, and I thought it was interesting to share with you the diversity of users in there. So you've got a door company, a baseball practice facility, you've got a dance academy, a virtual golf club. I don't know what the tile liquidators, I assume that consumers come there and buy tile, but maybe they supply contractors. And you just, you see there's someone selling e-bikes and then a gymnastics. So again, it gives a project like this a lot of stability when you've got that much diversity of the tenant type and not just one user. So you brought up the question of noise. It's always a consideration on any development, how this impacts the neighbors, and I think most likely the heavy industrial or manufacturing, those things are going to be limited to either manufacturing or more of an industrial. There is some light assembly here, and we want to be cautious of, and the delivery trucks are a concern also. But we see there's a lot less of that in these smaller-scale, small bay warehouses than in some of the larger ones. I agree with you, though, that the interaction of the care facility would be a critical thing to think about. We also believe that the front two lots, the way we designed it with frontage on 1,000 North is sort of an extension of that regional commercial, and that could potentially have some retail opportunities or even professional office. We've had some very preliminary conversations with the medical group about being there, and also more of a retail type of a user that we're working on, that's in our, we're about to build a building for them in Lehigh. They have an interest in being out here, and they would like to have a little bit more retail presence. So I think that the entrance could be a little bit more retail or professional, and then once you get in the park, probably a little bit more of that industrial. That's the end of my slides and pictures, but I appreciate you taking some time and looking at that, and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions?
Do you have any potential interest? Do you have any businesses that are considering coming there that you'd like to share?
It's hard to say. I mean, again, we try to take this one step at a time. We're a little surprised by our reception at the Planning Commission. Like, we've been very positive about this, but it's also cautious to spend a lot of money or make commitments, but the, I mean, there are some businesses that are here in Twilla that would want to move to. move to a newer facility that we've had some conversations with. Like I said, the one medical group is an existing medical practice that's here in an older building that has, we've talked to him about a different site about a year ago. And so they're interested in this, they've looked at it, but we're not far enough along to be able to talk about economics or really to seal, put a deal together. So I don't want to say that I have people that are ready to sign leases, no. We think that a lot of the, we have a small business park like this in Lehigh and we think that a lot of the similar uses, we have a swim school that was a, was the first user in our park down there and a neighborhood that was surrounded by a lot of residential and townhomes similar to this. And they have been so successful because there wasn't a big recreational facility and they've just drawn all the children and families from that neighborhood. It was an odd sort of use. I hadn't thought about a swim school, but they've been very successful. We have a storage facility in there. We have Caliber Collision has came in and they are there and they're, we're looking at a, we're building a site for rental car company next to the collision. So it is a mix of uses. We did get an equipment dealer, which was one of the allowable uses, like for machinery. And they've owned the lot now for a year and a half and haven't built. So I'm not sure if something has changed on their plans, but we were kind of excited and thought they were a good use also.
So would you subdivide it if some are owner occupied and some are leased? You subdivide it into different lots?
Yeah, we would subdivide it. Out of the 11 acres, we think that we would probably have about 50% of it that would be divided into, say, one acre lots that we would sell to owner users that could come in and they would be probably businesses that already exist in Tooele or want to be here. Let's say it's a larger window supply company or contractor that may want that. And then we would, the rest of it, we would put in these buildings that would be 20 to maybe as large as 40,000 square feet and that would be a condo plat. So then those would be divisible into those smaller units. And those, we would sell the units as a condo in a larger building.
Thank you.
And our thought would be that we would sell some of the lots to owner users and then we would maintain a portion of those condo units also.
And your access to this area would be not off 1,000 North, right? You would go down a future road? Or would there be an access?
No, there's an access 180 East, which is, I don't know, Andrew, can we go back to the aerial map? Well, you're, sorry about that. So 180 East is on the city's master plan and that runs directly perpendicular to 1,000 and is planned next to the fire station. So that would be a primary access. And then we anticipate connecting to the west, there would be an intersection, if you see on our site plan. And that road is actually also, so just behind the fire station, that, again, I've been researching this and there's, it's interesting, but that, the right of way for that road, I think that is 1,200 North, does that sound right? Is on the plat that was recorded and the right of way is already there to both connect the sewer and to have that road connected in there. So again, that's a piece that we would anticipate connecting that. And that, again, would connect out through Main Street. And then we would stub going to the north. We think there's another connection point in the future that way.
Perfect. Thank you.
Would this require like a business HOA association? Or how will you handle the mixed use of private owners and your owner or your renters?
Yeah, that's a good question and sometimes pretty tricky, but it would have a HOA. And it's pretty easy inside of the HOA docks that you could have a little bit different rules for those that were inside of a building that had common area maintenance. And then the, if, let's say those back two buildings, the large ones were owned on their own, they just wouldn't participate in some of the ongoing maintenance on site. But they would also, they would still pay in and be governed by the HOA as far as architectural guidelines and things like that. And also participate probably in the cost of monument signage and some of those things. We are proposing this to be public roads throughout the project, so the HOA would not have to maintain that. But when you get into some of these shared access between the buildings, the front buildings, there would be some costs at the HOA, just the common area maintenance and landscape and snow removal and things like that. But you're right, it gets a little more complex when you've got some that own their own lots. And we've done it before and attorneys are good at adding paragraphs to how to solve that.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys for the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, this has a public hearing, but any other discussion before we open it up to the public?
Well, I heard the discussion of the Planning Commission and there's a lot of discussion of what they wanted to be in that area, but that's why I actually called Andrew and asked him to tell us the name of all the businesses that could be there because I was concerned about that too. But I feel like now listening to this and listening to what's available there, I'm, I feel like it's a good thing. So I'm just, I think I'm for it, so.
I agree. This was presented as being townhomes at one point and I don't, I was pretty vocal and said I don't think it fits that use. And I, this is kind of what I had a vision of this area becoming. So I think it's a great use. I think we lack a lot of these buildings in our community. I work in the medical profession and I know that they have a very difficult time finding space for these that are not on Main Street. Everyone thinks that it has to be on Main Street. And I think that needs to change a little bit in Tooele, that we need to have some businesses that are not just on Main Street. This is close to Main Street. 1,000 North is a busy road, but knowing the future plan of this area, that there would be other access and this can help increase the speed of that happening, I think this is great for this location.
Well, and I, you bring up transportation and one of the things we talked about when it was going to be townhomes was the traffic on 1,000 North and it is terrible already. And that, this brings a lot less traffic, in my opinion, than it would with housing there. And it is part of a larger plan. I mean, we've been working with some other property owners in the area, you know, with the fire station and such, to get that road punched through so we can connect and get an alternate road off of Main Street so people can get off of there and get over to this side of town. And it's a really important part of our transportation plan, in my opinion.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments? We'll open it up to the public.
I have a concern, it's not a major concern, but it's a concern. And that is because of the facility that's already there. And I appreciate what you did with explaining what can and cannot be there. But I'm slightly concerned, will there be a buffer, like a wall between your property and that facility?
I believe there's a six foot precast concrete wall right now around, is my recollection of it.
Yeah, I think you're right. It is one there. I'm just somewhat concerned because those are seniors that are in there and I'm concerned with noise because most of them, I'm closing in on that, you guys got a long ways to go, but seniors normally eat 4:30, man, and they're in bed by 5:00. You know what I'm saying? And I really have a problem totally disrupting what they're accustomed to doing because it will. If, I mean, just a mere building, the facility is going to do that. And I'm not saying that it's not a good thing. What you guys said is 100% right. I, it just worries me that we're basically kicking them to the curb.
I don't see it as a, I don't see that way.
I'd say kicking to the curb was a strong word. Sorry.
If this was townhouses though.
It'd have been worse.
Yeah, it could have been worse. And that's what it, it's zoned that way right now, right? For medium density housing, I think it could be worse. I think having businesses in there actually is a benefit to our house because they're closing, right? There's no one there at night. They're most likely going to be open during normal business hours. So I think the risk of, there's always a risk of that. I don't know if the developer's going to build exactly what he has envisioned there, but I don't think the townhouse project will work there. And to me, this fits better there. And noise, I'm concerned about that, but most people, most companies, their business relies on some kind of marketing, right? Being a good member in the community, or say, don't succeed. So if they, if they are loud and people stop going there, they go out of business, so.
That's true.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? This is still, there's a public comment period, so, okay. We're going to open up the public hearing. We invite the public to address the council, state your name into the mic, keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then sign the paper by the chair.
Hi, you guys know who I am. My name is Richard and I live about 300, well, three blocks away from where this is at, right on 1,000 and 4th East. And, you know, a little bit what he said, you know, as far as it being the MDR, that space is reserved in the master plan for the residents and of the people that want to live out here for future home growth, people that build generational wealth, people that own homes, invest in our community out here. I don't see this as doing that purpose of what it's zoned for. And the other, you know, like it is MDR, so that senior's living should have MDR around it. They shouldn't be built boxed in by industrial. And you can have dance studios going and having bass music till 10, 11 o'clock at night if they need to rehearse and all that stuff can interfere with the elders over there. And nobody mentioned the helicopter that flies right over this property that lands 15 times a day. Like what kind of risk is that going to put the helicopter in, having to fly right over businesses? Are you going to move the lifelight pad, the helipad that we have? I mean, and the traffic right there, we already have how many lights now on 1,000 North? I mean, more than we do on 36s almost. We don't need any more traffic coming and going and people, you know, have another reason for collisions because people slam on their brakes to pull in there, which is a big problem we have with the single lane down at 520 East right now. People are slamming on their brakes, people aren't paying attention and running right in the back of the car that's sitting there waiting to turn. Maybe they have a blinker out, whatever, nobody knows. So that's my problem is we shouldn't be giving up MDR land when there's plenty of industrial land out here. We've got Utah Avenue all the way down, Marcosian, all those spaces out there where they could build these type units with minimal impact to the community. We have, these facilities have been built behind Les Schwab. Most of the units are empty. I mean, they've done these thing out here, I see them on Facebook, marketed all the time for $1,000 a unit, nobody, like, they're not getting snatched up quickly. So that's my concern is like what kind of crime is it going to draw? Having businesses, auto repair shops, people going back there at night to steal stuff. I mean, it's just not an area that's going to be patrolled or on a patrol where you can, like in an industrial area, where you can patrol the whole industrial area at night. So that's my concern, noise, traffic, and taking away MDR land off the master plan for the community to give to industrial when there's already land zoned for that that's unused currently. So that's my big concern. It's not against what they want to build. I mean, it's a good purpose, people need to grow businesses and stuff, but it's a location that's not the right spot. That's, and we talked about water, all these units are going to need water. They got turned down for townhomes for not having water. Each one of these is going to be like a townhome and have bathrooms and sinks and, you know, people could put kitchens over here and, you know, bakeries and whatever else. So if they didn't have water for townhomes, why do they have water for commercial? So, car washes, that's one of the zoned uses that this could have. They don't have water for houses, how do they have water for a car wash? I mean, none of that stuff's been presented at all to the Planning Commission or this, how they're going to get those utilities and where they're going to come from. So that's my concern. It's a great project, like we need stuff like that, it's just the wrong location. We don't need to be forfeiting MDR land for industrial land, we have an abundance of that. So, thank you.
Okay, time is still to the public. He's seeing no one else come forward, I will close the public hearing and we'll turn the time back to the council. Any additional comments, discussion? I want to speak to some of the things Richard said. Water, houses use a lot more water than a business. You could propose a car wash there, that doesn't, it's water rights that people don't have and businesses, the city were willing to give water for businesses because.
Sell.
Sell, yes, not give, thank you for correcting me. Sell, you're getting all excited there. Sell water because it does bring an impact, a positive impact to the workforce there, to our tax base. We've discussed significantly in the past that we have an abundance of residential, but we've lacked the commercial and we've had that imbalance in our taxes. So I appreciate the comments, Richard. I'm in favor of this still.
We should point out also that we have had a car wash come to try and purchase water from the city and we did deny that request for that exact same reason. So we're very choosy about what businesses we will sell water for. They have to fit into our plan, our commercial plan and not use an abundance of water, so.
And that's something we take into account if they do request to buy water, is how much water they use, what type of business will be there, so. Okay, any other discussion? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2025-15, an ordinance of the Tooele City Council, amending the Tooele City General Plan land use map for 11.7 acres of property located near 249 East, 1,000 North, with a medium density residential land use designation to light industrial land use designation.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman Hanson and a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gochis.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
I'm just going to state this. I do think this is better than the townhomes by a lot. Still not totally with it, but I'm going to be down there watching, man. Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item 8 is Resolution 2025-43, Resolution of Tooele City Corporation Supporting America 250 Utah and Recognizing and Approving of the Tooele City Utah 250 Community Committee, presented by John Perez, the Economic Development Director.
Good evening, council. So this is an initiative by the Utah Department of Cultural and Community Engagement. And this is basically the committee that's already in place for the Fourth of July celebrations and then adding on a few other staff within that committee. And Shiloh has already filled out the application for the America 250 Utah. And then there's the potential to receive $1,500 in funds that can be used for Fourth of July celebrations. And I said potential, it's not guaranteed, but that's one of the benefits. And it's just kind of celebrating, it's the 250th anniversary of the country, so that's kind of the idea behind it.
How do you, what's the potential behind the, is it a grant and you just apply?
Yeah, I think Shiloh, isn't it, we just submit that application, we, once we have this resolution, you know, with your guys' approval signed, then we submit that and then we should be, we would then receive it, is that correct?
Yeah, it was just dependent on the number of states. It's like first come, first served basis. And then more than, if we're getting early enough, that it's the Tooele laws of the money.
So hurry up and beat the county is what she's saying.
Okay, any other questions?
That was my question, because I heard the county talking about having a committee as well, so it's separate.
They are. Yeah, I'm on, I'm supposed to be on that committee too, so.
Double duty. I'd like to ask, who gets appointed to this committee and is it open for application, for people to apply?
No, so it's already the Fourth of July committee and then like myself is also on it and then Clarissa from the mayor's office.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thanks, John. It is exciting.
It is.
I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2025-43, a resolution of Tooele City Operations Supporting America's 250 Utah and Recognizing and Approving the Tooele City Utah 250 Community Committee.
I'll second. She'll second. We have a motion from Councilman McCall and as
We have a motion from Councilman McCall, and a second from Councilman Hanson. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item 9 is Resolution 2025-45, a resolution of the Tullis City Council acknowledging the mayor's appointment of Jill McIntyre to the Tullis City Historic Main Street Commission as a commission member, presented by John Perez.
Good evening again. So, this Historic Main Street Commission, if you recall, this was formed just about a year ago as an initiative to kind of delineate from the downtown alliance that's separate from the city. And Ed, Mr. Councilmember Hanson, he serves on this committee as well, which you see in Exhibit A. And Jill McIntyre, she is the county's tourism director, and I've had several meetings with her, and have attended different meetings with her as well. And, you know, from discussions I've had with her, I really do believe that she would serve very well on this commission. And another benefit too, about her being at the county, and the, a delineating factor as well, is that the chamber is the destination marketing organization for the entire county, including the city. Tullis City is not a destination marketing organization, and what that means is that they're then privy to different funds from the Utah Office of Tourism that were not. And some, for example, when we, you know, have our meetings and we discuss different projects or different initiatives, there could potentially be funding that she would then be able to go after from the Office of Tourism for different things. So to me, this really is a great appointment, and it would be a great addition to the board, to the commission, excuse me.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution 2025-45, acknowledging the mayor's appointment of Jill McIntyre to the Tullis City Historic Main Street Commission as a commission member.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio, and a second from Councilwoman Goaches. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item 10 is Ordinance 2025-16, an ordinance of Tullis City updating the city code by amending Tullis City Code Title VI, Animal Control, Chapter II, and Tullis City Code Title VI, Chapter IV, Part I, presented by Adrian Day, the police chief.
Thank you, council. We talked about this in a work meeting previously. This is changing the definition under the animal control code for removing cats from animals at large and from animal under restraint. We don't charge those. Adding farm animals to the animals at large, so you are in violation if you have a farm animal at large. And removing ferrets from wild animals and putting them to domesticated animals. And also under Code 641, unlawful to harbor stray animals. You can take a stray animal in if you're attempting to locate the owner, as long as you notify the shelter within 24 hours, and then changing it so we may impound the stray animal instead of showl. If there's any questions, I can answer them.
Any questions or comments?
I still haven't seen any wild ferrets since the last time you talked about it.
We're looking all, two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks ago, yeah. I've been looking all over.
Haven't run into a pet ferret either.
Me neither.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-16, an ordinance of the Tullis City updating the city code by amending Tullis City Code Title VI, Animal Control, Chapter II, and Title, Tullis City Code Title VI, Chapter IV, Part I.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Hanson, and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Thanks, chief. Item 11 is Resolution 2025-42, a resolution of the Tullis City Council approving the form of the lease/purchase agreement with Zion's Bank Corporation in a Salt Lake City, Utah, for a Ford 550 with camera equipment and authorizing its execution and delivery, presented by Jamie Grandpre, the Public Works Director.
Good evening. I agree with Councilman McCall, it's almost our bedtime, so we need to get this over with so we can get home, so.
Just pass by the clock.
I have before you tonight a lease agreement with Zion's Bank for the purchase of a camera van. If you don't know what a camera van is, we use this in our sewer department to video inspect our sanitary sewer system. This equipment, this Ford F-550 with the camera equipment that we're proposing tonight, will actually be for sewer and storm drain. This would be equipped to handle our storm drain as well, which currently we do not, are not outfitted for storm drain. Our current vehicle is a 2005 Ford, Ford E-450. It is pushing only 66,000 miles, as in, the use doesn't get a whole lot of driving, it just gets a whole lot of wear and tear from camera in the sewer. We have a lot of mechanical problems with our current equipment. Most of the work area and the computer room control switches, knobs are worn and loose. The engine dies and stalls while driving, especially and during turns and idle stops. Some of the tool drawers are, do not slide well. Spray off water tank leaks from the top, sprayed one needs replacing. The onboard generator is new, but overheats in 90-plus degrees weather after two-plus hours of runtime. The rail winch gearbox is worn and damaged, so just a list of laundry issues, right? So, that's kind of why we started looking for a new camera van. Budget-wise, it's hard to get the monies for a $400,000 piece of equipment, so we looked at a lease option on this one. We do have the lease payment in the budget to handle the, the lease. The, the total purchase price of the camera van is $383,903.18. The lease is for $310,000, that's 307 to lease the equipment, and 3,000 for the fee that Zion's is going to charge us. And then we're going to, rest of it's going to be a down payment. So the, I'm taking one payment and putting it as a down payment, because we have it already in the budget. So that way, we're not financing the whole 383. So, that's what I have for you tonight. It is a state contract with Dawson, that's who are purchasing the camera van through, is Dawson. They are a state contract. We are saving $11,734.12 by going with the state contract.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. What's the length of the lease?
It's a five-year lease. After the five payments, we own the vehicle.
Oh, okay, okay.
So that's why it's a lease purchase. We're leasing it for five years, we pay, make five lease payments, and then we, then we get, we purchase the vehicle after that, so. So in five years, it will be ours completely.
How often is this equipment being used? Sounds like fairly often, because everyone's...
Yeah, we use it quite often. It, it's used quite a bit during the summertime. It might be idle a little bit more during the wintertime, just because we don't do a lot of camera work in the wintertime unless we have issues. But during the summertime, it gets used quite a bit.
When I went out of the house, they were doing it on my corner this morning.
Oh, really?
It was a sigh.
They were working there. Yeah, and hopefully the camera was still working.
They had it down the hole, so hopefully, keep our fingers crossed.
We've had several times that we take it out and get it out into the sewer line, and then something breaks, and then we're having to try to get it back. So, we've always gotten it back, we've never had to dig it up to find it, but, you know, it's, this, where you're running out of time with this one, so.
Better knock on wood.
Yes. Yeah, we're still a few months out, because this, this vehicle has not been built yet. So as soon as we get your approval tonight, then we will let Dawson know that we have the, go ahead to get the, the camera van equipped. We are trying to get a chase, chassis, chassis?
Chassis.
Chassis. We are trying to get a chassis, so, put together for this one. And the price does go up July 1, so we are trying to get this purchased before July 1.
Smart.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-42, a resolution of Tullis City Council approving the form of lease/purchase agreement with Zion's Babacore Band Corporation, I think that's right, in a Salt Lake City, Utah, for, for Ford 550 with camera equipment and authorizing its execution and delivery.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman McCall, and a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Item 12 is Resolution 2025-46, a resolution of the Tullis City Council approving an agreement change order number three, with Broken Arrow for the installation of water connections at England Acres Park, presented by Darwin Cook, the Parks and Recreation Director.
Uh, council chair, if I may, give a little update prior to presenting this, so. As you know, we're under the construction with Phase 3 at England Acres, and just to report back that the project is moving along nicely. The, the landscape contractor is on site installing irrigation system. Broken Arrow has done 100% of the grading at the site to our 100 level, which is basically the, the base level for everything. They prepped the basketball court for the contractor for Renner Sports, and Renner Sports is also on site, prepping the basketball court that will be built there. So, moving along great. We also have a, coming up here quickly, in one of the areas, we have a youth group on June 11th that's going to actually plant about 40 trees for us on that day, which will, you know, help get the trees that this, we, we decided on this project, the city would obtain the trees ourselves, and this youth group is going to help us plant those trees, so. This resolution, we were actually, as we started this project, we were kind of hoping that we, with the, the two connections that we have there, that we'd be able to not add another connection. This park is kind of a unique situation where we do have the Devil's Ditch drainage running through the park, which is an actual FEMA floodplain area, so it is kind of regulated and monitored by the Army Corps of Engineers. As we progressed in this, and as the landscaping contractor designed the new portion of the irrigation, became very apparent that our existing two connections were not going to suffice in getting the park watered in a timely manner. We did look at cross, or going underneath the ditch with a, with a sleeve, it was a little bit comparable in cost of this, and being able to use a, a current connection. But the, the downfall to that is the process of getting permission to, from the Army Corps of Engineers to actually do that, because they do regulate their, and they, they, they say yea or nay of what, what you're going to do. I don't think it would have been a problem to do it, it's just probably a two-year adventure to get that done. So our engineer that's been helping us with this recommended that we just add another connection, and so the resolution that's before you today is to have Broken Arrow add that connection on the west side of the, of the park. And the, the amount of this contract is for 100 and... 110,000, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, 110,000. This does fall in line with three, or two other four-inch connections that we've done, that have been in the exact same change order, or in the exact same price range of 109,000 and 110,000. With this change order, I should mention that this does also include the RPZ for the, 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 the connection that was put in for the, the Phase 3 part of the park existingly, that just hasn't been connected yet. So, so this phase order is the, is the phase, or this change order is the new connection with its RPZ, and then the RPZ for the connection that was put in for Phase 3. Any question? Oh, sorry, it's
The resolution says 101,000, but the bid says 110,000.
I think the resolution, one of them's not that.
It's the bid, it's 110, because we, we, the reason we brought this to, it's one, the resolution is 110,285.36. Any questions?
Nope. Any questions, comments?
I just wondered what the RPZ meant.
Reverse Pressure Zone, so it's what stops the water from going back into our culinary system, so.
Just another acronym.
Yep, all of our irrigation systems, we are there actually with the parks. So we have, actually, at all of our park locations, we have, we have installed RPZs at every site, so.
So does, does this mean that we can put culinary water in there, or is this being watered through Middle Canyon?
This would, this would be culinary water, yes. We, we unfortunately do not, at this location, do not have secondary water.
Okay. Is there an option in the future, or, if it can come from Middle?
No, I mean, they're, a long time ago, they're actually not too far from this Middle Canyon when it was in a non-pipe, or like, when it was open air. Actually, did have a waterway through the, they're similar, it's close enough to this, but that just doesn't exist anymore, so.
The area, right.
Yeah.
It may be possible to run a pipe, but there's not enough water.
Yeah. We, and, yeah, and close, because of the fact that we have a tie-in for the golf course and also Elton Park, both of those facilities, any extra, like the mayor said, any extra water that we get for that, we're consuming it at the golf course and at Elton Park.
Thanks.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-46, a resolution of the Tullis City Council approving an agreement change order number three with Broken Arrow for the installation of water connections at England Acres Park.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Goaches, and a second from Councilman Hanson. I want to clarify something.
Chairman, can we put on the record the amount?
Yeah, I do. I was going to say, we need to change the resolution, page two needs to be changed.
110,285.32, correct?
36.
36?
Yep, 36.
110,285.36. Okay. All right, so we have our motion, and we have our second, and the clarifying amount. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0.
I changed it just in handwriting on this, but I assume you'll print a new page for the resolution, or whatever. No? Okay.
Thanks, Darwin.
Hey, I'm, I'm sorry. You mentioned a couple of things in the park, but you didn't mention the...
Ninja course?
The ninja course.
Yeah, oh, yes. So we, we do, just, the ninja course has been delivered, so we do have it in our possession. And as soon as, so in about two weeks, the contractor will move on to the solid surfaces, which will be the surround of the ninja course and the sidewalks. And then at that time, the ninja course contractor will come on site and install it. So, in July, there will be a lot happening at that park with stuff actually coming up the ground, so.
Sweet.
Our electric contractor, lighting contractor is just waiting for us to say go, which will probably happen here in a couple, probably in a couple weeks, so.
I'm sorry, I, I just wanted to know, because I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, our young stud who went down the fire pole, I want to see him on that ninja course.
I wasn't supposed to know that, I went down the fire pole.
That's twice.
I'll tear my Achilles tendon or something, I'm like, warp wall. Okay, item 13 is Resolution 2025-44, a resolution of the Tullis City Council authorizing the Tullis City purchasing agent to dispose of surplus personal property, the public works vehicles, presented by Michelle Pitt, the city recorder.
Thank you. When we put the resolution in the packet, it says that there are five vehicles, but we're actually asking six vehicles to be surplus. And they are, we have a 2011 Impala, two 2012 Impalas, they all have scratches, dents, rust, and damage to seats and carpet. We have a 1997 Ford Ranger that has a broken driver's seat, the transmission is slipping, there's scratches, dents, and rust. A 1999 Chevrolet S10 pickup, scratches, dents, rust, and damage to seats and carpet. And then a 2006 Dodge Ram engine, that has engine issues and body damage and rust. and body damage and rust. You can see that they're all very well-used. So we are just asking that you declare these surplus and we would like to take them to the live auction.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Good luck at the live auction. Not going to get much for them.
They're very well-used.
It's too bad you can't just advertise them to the public. You'd probably get more.
Yeah, we've tried that before and sometimes we have success with those.
At the auction, you're going to sell them all, but you're not, you're not going to get as much.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-44, a resolution of Tulsa City Council authorizing the Tulsa City Purchasing Agent to dispose of surplus personal property, Public Works vehicles.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman McCall and a second from Councilman Hanson. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes five zero.
Thank you.
Item 14 is invoices and purchase orders, presented by Michelle Pitt, the city recorder.
I do have one that came in just today. It's to Nico Pumps and it's for a backup pump motor for well number 12. And it is for 40,956.
Okay, any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we pay the invoice.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman Hanson. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Item 15 is our minutes from the May 7, 2025 work meeting and the May 7, 2025 business meeting. Thought they looked great. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Goaches and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goaches.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady and I vote aye. That passes five zero. And item 16 is adjourned at 8:12 PM.